Please rise for the Busiree City Council Chambers pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
McKiever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Young.
Here.
All right, you have before you the September 19th, 2023 regular council meeting minutes.
I'll move to approve.
Sec.
I have a motion by Mr. Potter, a second by Mr. Myers, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You also have before you the September 21st, 2023 special council meeting minutes.
I make motion approve.
Sec.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. Wireball, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak.
Madam President, before I would like to just extend my condolences to Mr. Young and his wife on the passing of his wife's mother this past week.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know anything about that, I'm sorry. Thank you. Moving on, we have communications and petitions, we have Mr. Zach here from the partnership who's going to give us our quarterly update.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, it's great to be here, Busiree City Hall. I'm pleased to be here, it's been, I think it's May when I talked about community development grant, a lot going on, and we have our first quarterly report, and we're pleased to share with you, we've been doing this on a quarterly basis, and I'll be checking in if you want us to come in, want me to come in, I can happy to update you guys on a more regular basis. We did have our member survey, and we did hear that some of the municipal bodies would like us to come in a little more often, so we're going to make sure to do that. So I am happy to do that. If any of you are not on our weekly kind of team reports, let me know, I'll be happy to get you on, but there's nothing like face-to-face, there's nothing like being able to ask questions or kind of dig in a little bit, and I like doing it because I like talking about what we do, some people might say too much, but I'm happy to do that. So as, thank you John for passing them out, I got a copy of the slides, so you can take notes or whatever, but also a copy of the report. So I'll start. And while John's passing out, I'll shift to the next slide, because John can't be in two places at once, like I said. Okay, so what I'm going to cover today is, I was just talking about the quarterly report, it's something that we're going to do four times a year, I'm also going to talk today about our, you know, some of the key performance indicators, what we look at, what's going on in the community, talk a little bit about our annual member survey, talk about some of our activities through the year, and recently, give you a little insight into the development projects that we're working on, what our pipeline looks like, and then I'm always going to make just a couple of comments, the administration asked me to make a couple of comments on the report, I know Kevin's going to be talking a little bit tonight, but just give my economic development perspective on airport, nothing lengthy, but that's what I want to cover tonight. Okay, so quarterly report, it's a new publication, adds to, we do an annual one on all the development projects, yeah, please feel free to pass those out, we do our weekly team reports, which I also provide comments in our annual development report, it's a lot of the kind of comments for me, performance metrics, so every year, we develop a scope of work, and how are we going to measure whether we did a good job, and so providing that ongoing scorecard, we think is really important, any announcements that happened in the last quarter, any activity and accomplishments, in this example, we got 26 highlights of what we've been working on for the last 13 weeks, and then project pipelines. Okay, great, thank you gentlemen, I appreciate the help. Okay. Going back up here, John, if you want to hit the next slide. Okay, so some key performance indicators throughout Crawford County, $43 million in new investment announced, some of those are economic development projects, some of those are community development projects, 134 jobs created that have been announced, and 199 jobs maintained, and then in March, it happens every March, to do national rankings of micro metropolitan communities or rural counties that aren't part of a metro area with county seats, like Busiree, between 10,000 and 50,000, and we ranked 22 out of approximately 550, so we were in the top 4%. We're shooting for, we have good, better, best metrics, so 20, 40, 60 million on the investment, so at the end of the third quarter, we're headed towards where we'd like to be, John, if you go back just a second, I'm sorry. No worries. National ranking, you know, our best metric is, our best measurement is if we can get the top 5%, so we were there, and then our jobs, 100 is our best, best measure, go ahead. So just high, high level overview. Okay, so we do an annual member survey, and this is members and stakeholders, it goes to all city council people and administrative people who get our, our team report, and then we, we ask people to rate us, and how we doing in certain areas, we also ask for what do you want us to start doing, stop doing, keep doing, we ask for people to prioritize the different things, so we know what the general sense of the key stakeholders is, and then we also ask for suggestions for improvement, we ask for what do you think the priority should be, kind of open-ended question, and we look for trend lines. So we're improving over last year, so that's positive, obviously, numbers don't tell a story, they're just a piece, so I'm not trying to represent, that represents everything, we got plenty of ways to go, but I'm pleased that at least in the perception, we're up to 4.2, I think we were 3.8 last year, communication engagement, we're much better, we're up from 4, 4.5, economic development from 3.8 to 4.1, and then community development workforce and all went up a point one, so everything's headed in the right trend, and then what may be interesting is that the top priorities of the, the people that we survey, number one is working with our existing business base, number two is attracting new businesses into the community, number three is helping with workforce development, helping the businesses that we have get the workers that they need, as well as helping students and local young people become aware of the opportunities that are here, and number four, entrepreneurship and small businesses, there's an additional five, but those are the top four. John, if you go to the next slide. So business retention and expansion, so I love this metric, so this is a metric that says, we work with our regional economic development organization, that's Regional Growth Partnership, we're Northwest Ohio, there are 17 counties in Northwest Ohio, three metro counties, that's Lucas County, Toledo, Wood County, Bowling Green, Lima, and Allen County, and then there are 14 other rural, non-metro counties like us. What happens is, we work to schedule meetings with existing businesses, we bring in the state people, we bring in the regional people, try to bring programs and, and, and value to those businesses, and what they do is, every time we do one of those official visits, and we do a lot more than the official ones that count for the state scoring, but they market, and so what that red arrow is showing where Crawford County is, we have surpassed Lima, Allen County, not only are we number one non-metro county, we're ahead of Lima, Allen County, and we're soon going to, going to overtake Wood County, and we have our sights set on trying to even get up to Lucas County, so we're, this is a hustle measurement, this is how hard you work in measurement, obviously, if you visit a company, you're trying to see what the needs are, meet those needs, no guarantee that company's going to expand, there's no guarantee, but it is a measurement I like, because it's how hard are you working? How are you trying to get out there to the businesses? So we're proud of this, and we're going to keep trying to do more of that. Next. It is the number one priority as well. So programs, so one of our metrics is, we want, you know, there's lots of these programs, right, tax credit programs, grants, there are service programs, hey, you want to learn how to sell to the government more effectively, or get on those bid lists, if you're looking to export, if you're looking, there are all kinds of technical assistance that's available, small business development center, mentoring that's free and available through something called SCORE, et cetera, we had a goal to get 99 of these programs listed in our database with small descriptor paragraphs and a contact, we're at 99 right now, through the end of the year, and then what we do is, we meet with the company, we talk about some of these, but immediately after, we follow up with the email, says, here's some of them, here's a link to that, tell us what you want to explore more, so it's a way that we are able to deliver efficiently information about the programs as a follow-up to the meeting, to continue to deliver more value. So we want to make sure, and then the last point there, just in the last quarter, in the third quarter, I, I joined and have been a part of, didn't know, they let me know, there's something called the Erie Basin Resource Conservation and District Council, that covers 11 counties, they do a lot of resource conservation, why is that important? Well, they have a quarter million dollars in, in a loan fund that they want to give to small businesses, so I said, hey, you got a spot on the revolving loan fund committee? Let me be on that, because I want to get that, that money accessible to people here that don't even know about it. So we just got on this, we're going to start getting materials together, get it out to the community, but again, I'm interested, we are interested in getting resources to the businesses, helping them grow. Next slide, John. Okay, marketing and communications, so far this year, we published 29 press releases and stories, and sometimes when we put out a press release, that generates stories in the media, generates stories in the traditional media, digital online media, and we track that, so those 29 press releases and stories help generate 130 local and regional stories in the media, we have a goal of 100, and, and social media posts 163, 100,000 Facebook impressions and reach, this is important because the way we market what is going on in the community, the way we get people inside and outside the community excited, it's not through advertisements, it's through sharing the good stories of what's going on and finding those stories, whether it's the city, you know, putting the water line over to Nevada and that, and getting a grant for that, that's something positive, and, or it's a business expanding, like Ivy Tech, or those kinds of things, so we want to get those stories out there, and what happens is, it not only disseminates through the community, but regionally, and so we work hard, this is one of the main ways we market to businesses, and, and it's drip, right, so the more they hear good stories, positive stories about Busiree, positive stories about Crawford County, the more they're like, wow, there's something going on there, and so it starts to generate over time, an increasingly positive impression, or people who didn't even know we existed, you know, it used to be the folks in Richland County were like, you know, mans feels to be all in, and I'm like, hey, there's some stuff going on in Crawford County, and that's what we want to do, start generating some interest, generate some positive buzz. Next slide, please. Okay, real estate, so we held, we started a new event this year at the end of July called the US 30 Expansion Expo, we invited realtors from around the region, some from Columbus, some from Cleveland, some Columbus, we had a very small attendance, but it's the first time we did it, we held it in the New Spec Building Galleon, but we, what we did is, we put a free real estate seminar, and then we had four presentations, so I presented on Crawford County, and all the things going on throughout the county, and Sarah Hurley, our person who runs our day-to-day in terms of working with the businesses and economic development, talked about all the, the land and industrial sites and buildings available in Busiree, available in Crestline to these realtors, and had them ask questions, we had an expert, a real, real estate person from up in northeast Ohio, from Cleveland, talk about the market, what's going on, what are lease rates, and then we had somebody from Regional Growth Partnership talk about talent, and talent acquisition, and how you acquire the talent, and that, we did that in an hour, so everybody had like 15 minutes, real quick, and then we had a ribbon cutting for the New Spec Building, but the point is, we want to have this every year, we may move it, we're going to promote different things, so it's a way of just getting on the calendar of the realtors to begin to promote another thing we're trying to do to market the real estate. We have in our database currently, right now, 27 available sites and buildings that we're marketing on behalf of the city of Busiree, and we get, we do that a number of ways, sometimes we get leads directly, sometimes we get leads through the state and through Jobs Ohio, they've done 139 leads so far this year, and I think we've responded with buildings that met the criteria about 59 times, no announcements yet, but we, we continue to work on it. We have another site that we're working to develop for the wave five site, Ohio Authentication, Crossroads Industrial Park in Busiree was the one, in the first wave, the first round, we're trying to do some more expansion in Crawford County and here in Busiree, and then right now, we're also working on a, going after a million dollar EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant, we're doing that on behalf of the county with Busiree, Crestline, and the county to go after that larger money, they love cooperation, and so we started that process of putting that application together. What that will do is give us money to do free Brownfield assessments, for properties that need to be redeveloped, we set them up then for land bank money, and get that money in through those programs, through Department of Development, to get those properties redone, similar to what happened with the Ice House, you know, we want to do more of that kind of work here in Busiree. Next. Okay, CU lead, we run the county's leadership program, we have for a couple of years, we got 21 students, 14 are from Busiree, this is our really, you know, there are many different types of leadership, this is really about getting newer leaders, or new to the community, really a chance to see what the heck is here, they get excited about what's here, and we visit all kinds of places throughout the county, but including the Busiree Copper Kettle Works, Busiree Y, Crawford County Public Health, Norman's Niche, Bakers, Fit Fab and Fun, later on, we're going to do Ohio Mutual and AFT to visit what's going on with our industry, so these people from out, throughout the county, seeing what's going on in Busiree features prominently in it, and we're trying to develop the next leader, get them really engaged, because what we want them to do is, you know, serve on boards, get involved with nonprofits, so in addition to being a leader at their business, we want them to be a leader in the community, and so part of that is getting them connected to these nonprofits, and we're going to do a really exciting thing, the class has taken on an event, where we're going to invite the nonprofits and do like, they all get like 10 minutes, 5, 10 minutes to give their spiel, and then that way, we can connect these next leaders, first time we've done this, connect those people in the class to the nonprofits, and they can say, hey, we're looking for this, we're looking for this, and begin to fill those needs in that part of the community. We got three more sessions to go. And workforce development, so the big thing in the, in the third quarter is, we hired Lisa Markham, very beginning, she started working July 10th, I believe, and that was funded, that is funded through federal money, flowing through the state, flowing to what's called Area 10, so all what's called WEOa money, federal workforce money, flows into a body, there are 10 of these areas, and we are in a shared area with Richland County, and that area has been getting consistently money, and they have been funding over the last several years, eight full-time workforce person, and here in Crawford County, we haven't had that action, we haven't had any support, so we partnered with the Richland Chamber to put in a proposal, and we got funding, not out of any of our existing operating money, federal slash through the state funding, to fund Lisa Markham, a full-time workforce person dedicated to this county, to help our businesses here, and she's done a lot of businesses in Crestline, she's done a lot of businesses, her number one is in, in Busiree, where she was hired, she's been on the job 13 weeks, we have the Crawford County Business Advisory Council, so all the superintendents put together a plan, we, we help host that at the Crawford Partnership, it's chaired by Todd Martin, but Bob Britton is there, Forrest Tristler is there, and the other three county superintendents, so we're working them actively on how we can engage the students, we are going to resurrect, and Lisa's working on this now, the wage tours are going to be active again in 2024, this is where we take students and a preview to the teachers to go visit our factories, visit Ohio Mutual, visit Hord, visit different kinds of career opportunities locally, so they know that there are things you can do here in this community, so we're excited about that, we're also working on an internship program for 2024, Work Advance is a program through Great Lake Community Action Partnership, so the Ohio Manufacturing Association, you've got a big chunk of money, and Great Lake Community Action Partnership, which is up in Fosteria, I'm sorry, up in Fremont, the third largest community action agency in the state, made a contract with the OMA to get a chunk of that money, and this is money for training people, finding people, and helping companies hire people that may meet certain criteria, so they've got this money, so we've introduced, and we've talked to local companies, hey, would you like to talk to GLA cap about getting involved in this, again, just trying to bring more resources to our companies, and then right in the middle, communityopportunity.com, so the person we hired, Lisa, next time I come, I'll bring Lisa, introduce her to those that haven't met her, but she's a 30-year veteran of manufacturing with especially in information technology, she's been IT manager, and what she's done, she's looking at this online platform, is this the way we should be going in the future, so hopefully by the end of the year, she's going to like have a recommendation to the school systems and others, this is not just designed for the schools, we were at Colonel Crawford a few weeks ago, signing kids up, trying to sign kids up, and then companies can see who's there, kids can find out about opportunities, and it's really an online sharing platform, but it's available to everybody, adults can go in there and find jobs, Lisa said that's how she thought about the job that we had, was through Community Opportunity, so communityopportunity.com, since we launched in 2017, about 3,000 students and 500 businesses, it's a little less active, because if you remember, our organization had Sherry Tinch Greeter, who was trying to work on that, and then before that, we had to get the funding, get the full-time person, now Lisa's promoting the business, it's going to activate more than it is right now, but decide where we're going to go. Next slide. Okay, so project pipeline, before I make a couple of comments about the airport, so these are projects we are either tracking or actively engaged in, so right now, in our system, 167 development projects, economic development is the, the largest majority, it's probably about 75% of our projects now, 67% of our projects, followed by community development, and Lisa is just getting started with helping our businesses, so workforce development, smalls, what you see here are two of our measurements, you're going to see by place, and you see of those 167, I believe it's 63 of those are in the Busiree area, so it's the biggest, the largest number of projects that we're working on are, are in the, in the city of Busiree, and then if you look, there's a wide distribution of industry, manufacturing being that large red section, but there is distribution, we're working with a number of different kinds of businesses to see if we can help them. Last slide, I think is on the airport, yep, Port Busiree, 17G, right, so this is, it's the airport, so I just want to give my quick perspective, so in 2014, there was a study by, done by the Ohio Division of Aviation through ODOT, where they looked at the economic impact, so I look at some of these things, not just for what they bring to the community, but also, this is something where they got 15 total direct employees, but also that are supported by all the things going on in the airport, with about 100, 1.5 million in like total output, that's like investment capital improvement program, and all those other businesses that are supported, and then in terms of payroll, both the small number of direct for the airport and those that are supporting all the activities, you got about annually 388,000, so obviously, it's one of the smaller airports, but it's not insignificant in terms of the economic impact that it has every year in the community, daily flights, it ranges, so sometimes when bad weather, it's zero, but we can have, and I think this is a shocking statistic that those that don't know, up to 30 different flights, some of those are people taking the flight school, which is a nice, nice amenity to offer community, but some number of those are corporate flights, there are a couple companies that use it regularly, but there are people coming in, for example, the, the folks who currently own the GE building, they, they will fly in, and we met with them and talked with them about trying to market that building and get folks into that building, but it's used by, 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 there is an increase also over the last couple of years in the amount of corporate activity, there are, I think, 32 hangars out there, and of course, we got this great history, right, the, the, Loretta Schmoller, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it correctly, I'm sure Fred Fisher will correct me, or Kevin, or, or, or anybody else, but you know, we had this, this great, founded by a woman, and I think that's just, you know, and really kind of a leader, new Amelia Earhart, really cool stuff, that we can be very proud of in Busiree, and then there's land out at the airport that we potentially could develop for industrial, and I've worked in communities, I've worked statewide, if you have land near an airport, obviously no guarantees, we're working on multiple options, so not like we're locked in, that's a great amenity to have. There was a project once in a marion number of years ago, where it was decided because a guy could fly his plane on the field and walk over to his factory, so that, that can happen, so that's just some comments I was asked to give on the airport, and you know, I think future, I know I've talked to just a couple, and I'm not particularly engaged with the airport, but they have, you know, 4,000 linear field runway, if in the future it could be expanded to 5,000 feet, where you could get jets of a certain size, that would be great too, but it is a wonderful asset, and I've worked in a few communities, so it's something you can be proud of, so I'm a big supporter. Any questions? Okay, last thing I'll say is, thank you, thank you for your ongoing support, on the last slide is myself, feel free to call me, and hopefully in the next few weeks, I did it last year, coming in the fourth quarter, I'd love to sit down and talk with you and hear you also face-to-face, what, how you're feeling about things, but thank you so much, appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of council.
Thank you, Dave.
He snuck out, that was quick. David said he likes to talk, I'm just the opposite, so anyways, before we get started here, the first thing I'd like to do is extend a thank you, on September 16th, we had our third annual fly-in, drive-in breakfast, car show, flea market, so forth and so on, had the B-25 bomber come in from Urbana for display and for tours, we were blessed with excellent weather, could not have asked for a better day, so had a really good turnout, and I'm not sure if any of you were able to make it out, we will be there again next year, hopefully, we plan on doing it for the fourth year, but to the local citizens who were able to come out and support us, we thank you very much, it would not have been possible, there's a lot of people dedicated, a lot of time, a lot of effort, even money and so forth, to help out, but Fred Fisher, he takes the ball and he runs with it, and he really developed it into something really good, and I hear people from other airports talking about how they enjoyed it and so forth that came in, and Doug Folt, and the Commodores Club, they, Doug really worked hard, and, and I appreciate that, and of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Hords, and they're letting us use a hangar for the breakfast and so forth, so we had a really good turnout, overall, I was really happy, and I think everybody was, haven't heard any complaints, so. Now, on behalf of the airport, what we're looking at is, for fiscal year 24, FAA project is to upgrade our runway lighting. A year ago, we put in a new taxiway extension, new taxiway lights, LED, the present lighting system we have on the runway, it was done in 2001, normally has a useful life of about 15 to 20 years, parts are hard to get, new bulbs are, you know, incandescent bulbs for it, are, they're special designed, they're impossible to get, so that's what we're looking for, for fiscal year 24. What we would like to do this year yet, if possible, is we are pursuing the building of a new terminal facility, with the Bills Act that came out a couple of years ago, there's, I think it's a billion dollars, is that correct, a billion dollars for terminal improvements and construction of new terminal buildings, but on the smaller GA airports, GA, General Aviation airports like us, it's $100 million nationwide, very competitive when you have, you know, several 3,000 airports competing for this kind of money, but we feel, due to the fact the city's been really good about maintaining, keeping the airport up, when things needed to be done, it's been done, and secondly, I think as Dave kind of highlighted, with the Loretta Schmoller connection, and the first airport in the country to be managed by a female, and then the other thing, the present building is too close to the runway, when it was built in 1948, that regulation didn't exist, it's grandfathered now, they could change the regulations at any time and take away the grandfather exemption, but it is a, it's, it's too close to the runway right now, so we would, if, if we were to build a new building, it wouldn't be on the same footprint, it would be further to the east towards Isaacville Road. Okay, so, so that, that is, CMT, Ben Cooley here, is our engineering group, and he has done a preliminary report submitted to the FAA on the new terminal building, different locations, why we need it, and so forth and so on, and now the FAA is requesting a terminal justification report, so we have to provide that to them. CMT is, they're going to charge $10,000 for that, and that's funded 90% by the FAA, 5% by the state, and 5% local, so it would be $500 local funds for this terminal justification report. The, so that, that is something I would like to see if we could get that legislation done this year, and enter into contract with them, so they can keep moving on this, because when the FAA calls and says, you have the money, you need to be ready to move, because it's highly competitive. The second thing is the, for the new runway lighting, the design engineering work, we would like to do that this year, if possible, so next year, we can hit the ground running and get, get it out for bids early. Now there, CMT, their fee for that is $55,000 for that design for the new runway lighting, once again, 90% federal, 5% state, 5% local. Just to give you an idea where we are as far as funds we have available from the FAA, for, every year we get what's called AIP funds, Airport Improvement Programs, we get 150,000 bucks every year, so '22, it was paid for 100% the project by the FAA, so we have carryover from '22, '23, we didn't do a project in '23, and then we have '24, fiscal year '24, so we have $450,000 available from the FAA for these AIP funds. Then, a couple of years ago, when they passed the Bills Act, there was more money given to airports, for fiscal year '22, we have $159,000, for fiscal year '23, $145,000, and it's yet to be determined how much we'll get for fiscal year '24, but it should be about the same, somewhere between 145,000 and 150,000, so if you add all these up, we have approximately $900,000 available monies coming from the FAA. Now, one thing I asked, and unfortunately, the answer was no, and you may be thinking the same thing, can we use part of that Bills money to fund our portion of the AIP grants? We cannot, they won't allow you to do that, so that has to be done, you know, on a local basis. But we would like to, and when I say we, myself and the Airport Commission and, and everybody involved, so once again, to kind of recap, the terminal justification report, if we could enter into a contract with CMT for $10,000, of which 90% federal, 5% state, 5% local, and then the design work for the new runway lighting, which we would like to do next year, $55,000, once again, 90% federal, 5% state, 5% local. Any questions?
Well, you said it was 500 local for the building specs, right, so what's the local cost for the lighting?
It'd be 5%, it'd be 27.50, for the design, for the design work. It'd be 5%, it'd be $27.50 for the design, for the design work. All these, all these grants, or at least the grants that we get, you know, from the FAA, they're 90% funded by the FAA. We were blessed because, you know, two years ago, it was almost $2 million, and they paid 100% of that, that was during the COVID crisis. But going back to 2017, when we resurfaced the runway, we've gotten about $3 million from the FAA. So I think if the FAA didn't feel there was an importance of this airport to the community, they wouldn't be funding it, but they've been there. As the city has been too, which we appreciate.
So anybody else have any questions?
So basically have a referral for the FFA, I'm sorry, FAA report for the justification for CMT to create that document as well as the design work for the...
For the runway lighting upgrade.
I'll make a motion to refer.
That needs to go to Finance and Service, correct?
Economic Development.
And Economic Development, all three of them?
I don't know about Service.
Services is airport.
So all three, maybe.
All right.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
So it's been, it's been referred to committees, they'll meet Thursday and have further discussion.
Okay, thank you, Madam President, I appreciate that.
Yes.
Kevin, would you introduce?
And I was just about to do that, you read my mind. Once again, this is Ben Cooley from Crawford, Murphy &amp; Tilly. He's, I mean, he's the kind of guy you get responses to your emails at midnight, so I don't know when he sleeps, but he does a great job. We have two members of the Airport Commission here. Dave Shealy is the president of the Airport Commission, and Kevin Locke is a member of the Airport Commission. The other members are Doug Folt and Fred Fisher, and who am I missing?
Bud.
Bud Logan, yeah, so those are the, and like you guys, they do a lot of work for the city, and it's not always recognized and so forth, and we appreciate what they do, and we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, standing committee reports, Plating?
I have nothing at this time.
Public lands and buildings?
There's nothing at this time, thank you.
Health and safety?
No report.
Finance?
No report.
Economic development?
No report.
Service?
No report at this time.
Traffic commission?
No report.
All right, recorded city officers, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, thank you very much, Madam President.
I'm down to my last few meetings, I kind of want to take some opportunities in these last meetings to kind of, you know, focus on a few things that I think we need to kind of address, and future councils, future citizens, and this, you know, we want to, we want to resume the growth of city Bucyrus for obvious reasons. I mean, if you're, if you're not growing, you're, you know, you keep shrinking, and then that affects everything, employers, it affects your business and housing, so I think we really have to focus on that. But you want to look on especially attracting workers that live in the city and are income tax contributors, because that's how you fund all services, like the airport, and like Safety Forces. So we, we agree, I think everybody kind of is in the same boat nationally. The housing shortage is in Bucyrus as well as everywhere else. Single-family homes, apartments, condominiums, we can use them all. So how do we as officials address the issue? When there's multiple facets to the problem, there's a shortage of builders statewide, and locally there are too. There's infrastructure costs that have skyrocketed, and there's zoning issues that need to be addressed, especially now that we've torn houses down, and we have building lots that may not meet new specs. I know John and I have discussed that, and we kind of have a, it's on our radar to present that. The infrastructure that, it includes stormwater, sewer, construction of a new street, I want to talk about those. Now, if you look at one that we're doing this year, to kind of rebuild it, and that's Dudley Street. And the two to three block area, we're putting in a new stormwater line as well as new sewer, and we're going to be rebuilding that, it's going to be well over a million dollars, probably a million three. So if you extrapolate that, we're looking at about $6 million to put in a mile of new roads in the city somewhere, new subdivision, about $6 million. And that was confirmed by our engineer, Dylan Wyatt. So funding would have to be financed through either taxation revenue, as well as it could be grants, most likely a combination. But let's assume that we borrow $2 million, and just to put in new infrastructure, some new roads to build houses on. That loan's got to be repaid, and if you have a 20-year loan, the annual payments, depending on the interest rates, could be, you know, 100 to $300,000. And we just don't have the money in the budget right now for that. So, so the biggest issue we face with infrastructure is really, what is your return on investment? Because we're just basically spending the taxpayers' money to get the best, to keep them safe and get the best return on their investment. We must have enough new tax revenue to cover the cost of the loan as well as future maintenance. So you're kind of in, you know, kind of a proverbial catch 22, we need it, but we can't afford it. So the other issue is when you're building housing, new housing is, it's, it's, you have to, you have to look at this in the financial perspective. The new residents come in and, unless they're living in the city and working in the city, they don't pay any income tax because of our tax code. The property taxes, the vast majority of it goes to the county. So, and we don't ask the county to help fund that, so that's all on the city. We get a little bit on property taxes, and we get a little bit on sales taxes, the rest goes to the county. The revenue required to fund new construction must come from income tax, basically is what it's got to come from, or grants, but mostly income tax. And the return, to we present to our citizens, has to be a reasonable return. Can we assume that these new residents were working Bucyrus? Well, I've mentioned before, the trend is, you know, people drive to work. We can't make the assumption they're going to live here. I think it was around almost 40%. We estimate about 40% of our folks live here, they like living here, but their tax money, because of state legislature, goes to the cities they work in. And until we just put that quarter percent in, we were getting nothing. So it's, and it's, we're also getting residents moving here from bigger cities. Why are they moving here? Because they like small-town living, and they like low cost of housing, low property taxes. So we're attractive to a lot of people. So it comes down to this question, can the city of Bucyrus justify the cost of investing in new infrastructure with our current level that we give on tax credit? The answer to this question will determine the ability of this community to grow again. So that's something, as I close here, the City Council needs to look at and make those decisions. So if we're going to be moving forward and providing housing, that's got to be, that's got to be addressed. It's going to be up to you and up to certain, the new councils. So we have, we have land, we have plans, but we can't borrow the money, because we can't repay it right now. So, so we have to work together. I know we've mentioned this to future administrations, and I know they're concerned about it too, but this is a big issue, I want to just kind of throw it out there and have everyone think about it, and then we'll kind of continue the series maybe at the next council meeting on a couple of the things, too. So thanks for hearing me out.
If you have any questions for the Mayor.
Better question, Mayor. What is the Vader Water Army turn going?
We're just waiting for one more, one more thing. From their end, so I think it's supposed to be within the next couple of weeks. We will make an announcement, and there will be a ribbon cutting.
Okay.
Yeah, when we do that.
I've asked you that a couple times.
Yes, yeah.
Good enough.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have anything from the Safety Service Director?
There is no report, we're going to refer, we were going to refer the, okay, help me word this, Miranda.
Stormwater.
Yes, the Stormwater Appeals Board, yeah, the nominations for Stormwater Appeals Board to Service Committee, please.
May I have a motion to refer Stormwater Appeals Board membership to Service?
Sure, move, second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Mr. Gerner.
Thank you, Madam President. After having recently discussed Bucyrus Codified Ordinance 923.24 with Jeff Dunn, which is the responsibility for maintenance of sanitary sewer lines, we would like to refer this to Service Committee to discuss implementing a change to this ordinance. Currently, the ordinance makes the homeowner responsible for the lateral from their home to the city sewer. Where there is a cleanout, the homeowner is responsible for the lateral from their home to the cleanout. The current ordinance also makes the homeowner responsible for the cleanout. In practice, however, the city has been maintaining these cleanouts for the homeowners at our city expense. We would like to change the current ordinance to reflect that the homeowner is responsible for the lateral connecting into the city sewer from their home to the sewer regardless of where their cleanout is located. The benefit of this is that it goes back to what was originally intended, that the homeowners are responsible for their own cleanouts and laterals. Further, the city has no pragmatic use for these cleanouts, they're primarily for the benefit of the homeowner. The city has spent approximately $2,000 per cleanout plus the additional maintenance fee without any, any measurable benefit to the city. The money, Mr. Dunn proposes, the money that we would be able to save could be diverted into a fund whereby down the road, we can help homeowners tap their rainwater drainage system into our new stormwater sewers, which would further realize the goal of getting stormwater out of the sanitary sewers and out of people's basements. If you have any questions pertaining to the logistics and all of the stormwater sewers and laterals, Jeff Dunn would be the best person to ask. But that was an idea that he had brought to me, and I have brought to council to discuss further.
Do you have any idea if he's planning on being at Thursday's meetings?
He cannot be at Thursday's meetings, but if you guys have any questions, you could email them to me, and I can bring answers to those questions beforehand.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Gerner?
Yes, sir.
Do you know in your research that when was that changed from?
2012.
2012?
Yeah.
And you know any of the history behind why that was done at the time?
I do not. I think that what was envisioned was that the store, the cleanouts would be further up towards, no, further out towards the street, so that the portion that we're responsible for would be minuscule anyways. But in practice, these cleanouts have been put in the middle of the yard or up towards the house, so the city is taking on a larger responsibility for those laterals. And I think it was intended so that we could get in and clean out laterals going out to this sewer from the cleanout, but we've never actually had that issue. The cleanouts have always been used just to clean out back towards the house. Is my, I mean, that was the half an hour discussion and my limited knowledge on sewers and cleanouts.
Thanks.
But, yeah. And you asked me, how many of these do we install a year? I don't know, but it seems like we're up to 15 to 20, 10 to 20 per year that we're dealing with. So we're looking at, you know, a couple thousand, $40,000, 20 to 40. And I know some community, he told me, some communities have taken these, because once we have stormwater sewers, it's a difficult task for homeowners to be able to afford to connect their rain systems into these stormwater sewers, so we have them, but they're not being fully utilized, we're still just dumping water into the ground and letting it saturate slowly. And what would be beneficial, I think, he told me, like Ontario and some other communities have used some of this money to actually help homeowners tap their rainwater drains into stormwater sewers, which then further helps the EPA get off our back, I think. We hope. We hope.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for Mr. Gerner? We have a referral for the change of codified ordinance 923.24 for the lateral connections to Service. May I have a motion?
Sure, move, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. Young, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Schiffer, I'm sorry. Oh my goodness, Ms. Lewis.
I hope we're all enjoying the spookiest season with our families. You have all received the detailed trial balance for September along with revenue comparisons. The tax revenue for the general fund is up 10% this month. On a date-to-date comparison, we are down $22,612.19 from where we were in 2022. Our Safety Forces revenues are up 60% this month, and my previous address to council, I had said our mid-month reports were showing increased revenues in the Safety Fund at around $22,000. This month ended with a total of $61,570.80 added from the levy. Since the beginning of the increased quarter percent levy, the city has received a total of $114,418.31. Remember, we need to garner at least a total of $120,101.75 we can appropriate those funds for payment of employees this year. As of September 1st, we have only, we, oh, sorry, October 1st, we only have $116,651.31 in the fire salary line. Last month, fire salary totaled $150,420.50. So in order to finish paying them for the rest of the month, we need to move the remaining ARPA funds as an emergency so they continue to get paid for their valuable work. I have also received the resolution for accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Crawford County Budget Commission. We can now move forward with approving the 2024 tax budget by October 27th, 2023. I have also had conversations with Chief Ostenheimer about the purchase of two new vehicles for the police department. The department has purposely been keeping their overtime to a minimum in hopes of using their savings elsewhere. They are having significant difficulties with at least one of their vehicles. Due to the autoworker strike, we are anticipating vehicle prices to increase, so the police chief would like to move the budgeted money saved in the 202 salary line for the purchase of a new cruiser. Initially, he and I thought we would have enough to discuss the potential of two cruisers, but with last month having three pays, we would not have enough money for two. The chief will be here on Thursday to answer any questions about the car. Regarding the newly created 270 Local Fiscal Recovery Special Revenue Fund 2023, that's a mouthful. Late last week, I spoke with Cindy McCafferty, one of our representatives from local government services, a part of the State Auditor's Office. She has been working with other cities within the county that have received money from the county commissioners' ARPA funds. She told me that she was recently informed that the current state protocols do not allow for cities to appropriate the money into the fund in the way we're used to. We are considered a sub-recipient of the county's federal ARPA funds, and therefore, we must front startup money around $300,000 from the Water Works Fund 701, which does currently have the available funds and send, transfer that to the 270 Special Revenue Fund. We would then submit invoices for reimbursement into the Special Revenue Fund 270 to keep the fund revolving until all projects are completed. Once the projects are completed, we would transfer our startup money back into our Water Works Fund 701. This is all for the legal tracking of those federal dollars. Unfortunately, our vendor, Driven, has already completed a large portion of the Stetser Road 602 project and has sent the initial bill of $244,294.07, and is currently in the process of submitting a second bill. In order to remain in good standing with his vendor, I was hoping we could call a special meeting after committee meetings this Thursday, so that we could get that handled and Driven can receive their prompt payment. In closing, I would like to refer to Finance Committee as an emergency moving money from Fund 271 to the General Fund for Employee Wages. To Finance Committee as an emergency, the approval of the tax budget for 2024. To Health and Safety and to Finance Committee as an emergency, the transfer of funds $60,000 for the purchase of a vehicle to the police, for the police department. To Finance Committee as an emergency, transferring $300,000 from the Water Works Fund 701 to the Local Fiscal Recovery Special Revenue Fund 2023, Fund 270. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Lewis?
You'll be here Thursday?
Yes.
I'm going to ask the question now, to give you the chance to do some research, to talk more about on Thursday. You said initially you were looking at the potential of two police cruisers, but we don't have the funds to fully pay for two. But you also mentioned, and the chief mentioned, that... But you also mentioned, and the chief mentioned, that looking at the potential of not being able to get a hold of vehicles for a while. Is there any potential of getting a second vehicle and doing a financing option, something on that, where we pay for a small portion of it just to get it ordered and then look at paying for it in the future? So if you could just look at options for that to discuss Thursday, that would be good.
Sure.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else? All right, I have four referrals from Ms. Lewis.
I'll make a motion for the four referrals to Finance and Health and Safety.
I'll second the motion for the referrals, but we'll go ahead and list those out. The Finance says the emergency moving money from Fund 271 to the General Fund for Employee Wages, the Finance Committee for Emergency Approval of Tax Budget 2024, to Health and Safety and to Finance for the emergency transfer funds for the purchase of police vehicle and to finance the $300,000 and to fund?
270.
270, as an emergency.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We do not have anything from Ms. Miller. The police chief with the fair chief, so may I have a motion to accept city officers' reports?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Granting permission for visitors to speak on reports of standing and special committees and city officer reports.
Vicki Deshawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bussaras. This is for Mayor Reeser. First off, I want to thank you for sending me your email response on September 21st, answering my previous inquiry on September the 5th of, were there any streets not listed on the original three-year mill and pave plan for 2023 that were not done or that were done in 2023? Your response was Pearl Street. I will have to admit, I had no clue where Pearl Street was.
I didn't.
For those of you that are not aware of Pearl Street or where it's located, it is a platted but not fully developed street, which allows access to Shut Brothers Sales and the Anthony Michelak residence, both located on Nevada Road. It would appear, however, that there still is some confusion on what streets were done in 2023 that were not on the mill and pave program. Because in reviewing the 2023 street paving list on the city's website, I note the following. First off, Pearl Street's not listed. Lane Street from Mansfield Street to Mary Street is listed, but that was not on the original plan. East Galen Street is listed but was not on original plan. And the alley between Fowler and Union is listed but was not on the original plan. I'm wondering, is there someone else I could check with to get an accurate list of the streets done in 2023 that were not on the original 2023 mill and pave plan?
When you started, you said on the original, I think you said on the original three-year plan. Did you mean to say that?
Well, it is a three-year mill and pave plan, and they had 21, 22, and then the 23 streets.
So you set up this plan in 20 and 21, and, you know, and you were wondering why that wasn't, why there were things that were changed. That would you really asking?
No.
Okay.
For the third time, my question was of the streets that are listed on the three-year mill and pave plan for 2023. What streets were paved in 2023 that were not on that list?
Okay, I think that was only the second time.
No, third time.
I think second.
No, it was the third, because the first time I asked, you couldn't remember what the question was, and you asked me to repeat it. Then the second time, you thought I was asking why Pleasant Hill wasn't on it. What's that?
Let's repeat it one more time.
I refuse. If you can't get it three times, do you have it?
I got it.
All right. So are you going to answer my question or do I need to?
I will look at it.
Okay, fine. And you'll have an answer to me?
I'll get an answer to you.
And that will be when, since this has been going on?
Soon as I can get it. Not tonight, though.
How about Thursday?
It will be Thursday, it'll probably be Friday.
All right, great. Appreciate it.
I said properly Friday, I'll do my very best.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Moving on. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
Proposed ordinance 35-2023 appropriations. Mending and supplementing ordinance number 66-2022 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023 by appropriating from unappropriated swimming pool funds the sum of $485.18 to the personal services line item within the pool category within the swimming pool subparagraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated stormwater utility funds, the sum of $330,000 to the capital outlay line item within the stormwater utility category within the stormwater utility subparagraph. And finally appropriating from unappropriated stormwater utility funds, the sum of $725,000 to the capital outlay line item within the stormwater utility category within the stormwater utility subparagraph and declaring an emergency. Proposed ordinance number 36-2023 reimbursement of funds. Sorry. Proposed ordinance 36-2023 reimbursement of funds. Amending and supplementing ordinance number 66-2022 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023 by decreasing the current balance in other uses line item by $5,118.75 within the general government category within the county sewer maintenance subparagraph with the county sewer maintenance fund and increasing the current balance in the from-county sewer line item by $5,118.75 within the reimbursements category within the sewage disposal fund subparagraph within the sewage disposal fund and declaring an emergency.
That's a tongue twister.
Yeah. Proposed resolution 226-2023, that's the 2024 OPWC project. A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director on behalf of the City of Bussaras to prepare and submit an application for a 2024 Ohio Public Works Commission grant for various storm/sewer water projects and declaring an emergency.
May I have a motion to accept these as a first reading?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for members of the public to speak on legislation read for the first Seeing none. Consideration of proposed legislation for a final time?
Proposed resolution 225-2023, it's the investment policy. Hereby approving the adoption of the Bussaras City Investment Policy.
May I have a motion to accept this as a final reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for the general public to speak on legislation read for the final
Vicki Deshawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, concerning proposed resolution 225-2023, which is approving the adoption of the Bussaras City Investment Policy. At the September 5th, 2023 council meeting, I had informed council of the following changes that needed to be made to this proposed resolution. That was line nine, since this is a resolution, the word ordained needed to be replaced with resolved. Line 10, since this proposed resolution is not an emergency, two-thirds should be replaced with a majority. And that wasn't caught when it had its second reading at the previous council meeting. And I'm not quite sure.
I don't know. Sorry, I didn't watch it again.
Pardon?
I said I didn't catch it again.
And I was reading over our codified ordinances 111.11 ordinances and resolutions, and I'm not sure how you go about correcting this, because it talks about that an ordinance and resolution shall be read first for information on the day when introduced. Then the same shall be taken up at a, and that's considered the first reading. Then the same shall be taken up at a subsequent meeting of council, when it shall be read a second time and may be amended. So it would appear that the amendment, you can't make until the second meeting or second reading. But again, it goes on to say, when amended, it must be referred again to the committee who will report it back to council in its amended form, and it shall again have a first reading.
Right, so this wouldn't be an amendment, this would be changing what actually happened in the statutory history of this piece, right? So this piece wasn't an emergency, so it wasn't passed by two-thirds, it was passed by a majority. And this piece wasn't ordained, it was resolved. So as far as amendments, that would be amendments to the body, to the actual structure, not amendments to the statutory history of this piece.
Okay.
So I, I mean, I can go to the basement and print it out. I know it's corrected, I don't know where it's at. So we'll go and we'll print it out, and then we can pass that piece.
Okay.
But it's, yeah, I agree, but the amendment part would be to the actual structure and changing what's going on. If we were changing the policy that we were adopting or we were adopting it for a different time period, that would be an amendment. This would just be a statutory history-type piece.
But you do agree that?
That needs changed.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You do agree.
That was a part of the session, it's already been amended or corrected?
It's corrected somewhere in my computer.
Can we take a break to get that?
Yep.
Yeah.
We're going to recess.
Is the official copy you have for signature correct or is it incorrect?
I think it's correct.
I must have printed the wrong one, because I had to make sure to fix it.
Right. We, yeah, we'll go fix it.
All right, we're going to recess at 8:02.
I could use.
Back in session at 8:07. All right. Referring back to originally committed, proposed ordinance 35-2023 is referred back to Finance. Proposed ordinance 36-2023 is referred back to Finance. Proposed resolution 225-2023 is referred back to Finance. And proposed resolution 226-2023 is referred back to Finance. Committee reporting on pending legislation. Finance.
Finance, I'm sorry. Finance is, where are we at here? Okay. Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 35-2023. The appropriations, Finance is also favorable to proposed ordinance 36-2023, reimbursement of the enterprise funds are also favorable to proposed ordinance, resolution 225-2023, investment policy. And Finance is also favorable to proposed resolution 226-2023, the 2024 OPWC project.
Thank you. Further consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 35-2023, do I have a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Ms. Sherrick.
McKeever?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 35-2023?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
Young?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 36-2023?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. McKeever.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Ordinance 36-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 226-2023, for the second and third readings of proposed resolution 226-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Young.
Wireball?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 226-2023?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. Potter.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Resolution 226-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 225-2023, for the second and third readings, no, that was the final reading, I apologize. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Wireball.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution 225-2023 is duly adopted.
I need a motion and a second to go into executive session for the discussion of compensation for the council clerk, Miranda Wise.
So moved, second.
How's that, Mr. Young? I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Young.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Resolution 225-2023 is duly adopted. I need a motion and a second to go into executive session for the discussion of compensation for the council clerk, Miranda Wise.
So moved, second.
How's that, Mr. Young? I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Young.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 226-2023?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. Potter.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Resolution 226-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 225-2023, for the second and third readings, no, that was the final reading, I apologize. Do I have a motion to adopt? And I do need to add, if we're going to have the full committee visiting hiring in there as well.
I would like to request that Mr. Hickman and Ms. Deshawn be involved since they were on that.
I don't agree with that. I don't. I won't agree with you. I'm sorry.
This is a, in my opinion, this is a current council issue, not a future council issue. Ms. Deshawn and Mr. Hickman were invited in as basically unpaid consultants, and if you have an unpaid consultant come in and do an interview to vet potential employees, you do not bring them back in to discuss their compensation at that time.
So then in response to your comment, what is the difference then when you went into executive session with, when I sued council? You went into executive session with the council that was not being sued.
Which is the good.
This council. And you invited to that meeting the council members that were being sued. I mean, you could argue the point, this council had nothing to do with that suit. My suit was against the council previous.
Well, so you can't sue individual members of council because of sovereign immunity. These people have sovereign immunity, so you have to sue the body. So we invited the previous body because those were the members that were in here that were privy to those meetings, and you invited the current members of the body because these are the members that would have to settle that suit because they were the only ones with the authority to do so.
That's correct.
That's, I mean, that, I don't know, I don't care about whether you're here for this meeting or not, I have no dog in that fight, but that's why we did it that way because the previous body was the group that had done the acts that were perceived to be in contra of the sunshine law, and the current body was the only one with the authority to settle that lawsuit, these people.
So just so I'm understanding correctly, Mr. Hickman and I, it was fine enough for us to be asked and we agreed to serve on the ad hoc committee to discuss and to interview for the council clerk, discussing, you know, the wages and what have you. But now that you're going into executive session to discuss again compensation, which you've already agreed to based on what the ad hoc committee recommended to the full council, you don't want us involved?
I don't have any dog in the fight, but that seems to be what council is saying, yes. I don't care.
Am I allowed to ask for each person?
Absolutely. So wait, quick question.
Yes.
You were saying that before it was because the people who were privy to the meetings needed to be there?
Well, no, so Vicki named those people, right?
Right.
And unfortunately, sovereign immunity applied, so those people can't be sued in their individual capacity, but she named them, so we had to bring them in to explain what the lawsuit was and how we would defend them. And yes, those people were privy to those meetings, so it felt it was appropriate to bring those people in to at least let them know, hey, you've been named in this lawsuit, you don't need to go hire your own attorneys, this is why we were sued, but you have sovereign immunity because everything that you have done was through the public body. But you guys, as the new council, were the ones that would have to agree to any settlement because you're the only ones with the authority to settle that case. You can't bring in the old council because they have no authority anymore, and all the old council members, although they were named individually, I thought it was important to bring them in and let them know what was going on, but at the same time, they, they don't have any authority nor would they have any liability.
But if you will look at other suits that are filed against other city councils, they always list council as a whole and they individually list council members.
Oh, I don't know, they might, but they always get kicked out because you can't sue individual council members in their official capacity. They might list them, I don't know, but they, you cannot do it, it's black letter law.
So I guess if I may ask, Mr. Wireball, do you have a problem with Mr. Hickman and I attending, yes or no?
I do because this council hired them, even though you guys interviewed them, we hired them and we set the wages on January 1st, you will have, or after January 1st, you'll have a chance to rehire her and do whatever you want, so.
Yes or no, Kevin?
The reason that I wanted them in was because they were part of the original conversation. They don't have any authority, anything that happens in executive session, we come out of executive session and this body makes any decisions, but they have the historical understanding of why we're at where we're at. So yes, I was in favor of asking them to join.
No.
I, I don't understand why this is even a discussion, no.
I had no problems because they were a part of the conversation.
No.
I have no issue.
Then if Mr. Hickman and I are not invited into the executive session, I was hoping that we could do that rather than me publicly stand up here and state some things that I feel that you should know. Do I have permission then to give my information to you?
Point of order? I'm not sure what the information is, but I'm not comfortable with.
I agree.
Someone coming up here and discussing about a certain person, so.
And.
Whether good or bad or indifferent.
No, and that's fine. And just so you all know, I have met with Miranda and Miranda and I have spoken. So what I'm saying is nothing new of what Miranda has heard.
Doesn't, it doesn't matter. I don't believe this podium is a public, is a place for public discourse about people good or bad.
Well, it's nice to know that y'all were willing to let us be on a committee, but now you're just shoving us out the door.
No, no, I, I think that was.
I have nothing more to say to you, Mr. Wireball.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick.
Could I speak?
I needed to re, redo without the appointment.
Just for some context, Mrs. Deshawn, so you understand where I'm coming from, we were upset that we weren't involved in that ad hoc committee meeting. Even though we will not be here next term, we felt that we should have been included. I, I know it's not your fault, but what I'm saying is I think that there should be a certain order to it. We're the council here that's here now that has that authority over this situation. I felt like we should have been involved in that. It, that's not the reason I don't think that you guys should be involved in this, I just think that it should be done in due time. It's nothing personal. I think that you'll get to make that decision when you take these seats. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, I move that we enter into executive session to consider the appoint, or to consider the compensation of a public employee as per Ohio Revised Code, section 121.22G1.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by. Mr. Spiegel, we are in executive session at?
Yeah, roll call.
I'm sorry, that's right. McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
And I have my sheet of paper back that we needed to use to make sure you were entering into this properly. Thank you.
We are in executive session, date 21. All right, it's 8:32, we are out of executive. We have to have a motion and a second. I have a motion to exit executive session.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please. McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young? It's still 8:32. We are out of executive session at 8:32. All right, do we have any new or miscellaneous business? We don't have any numbers missing. We have referrals, employee wages to finance, approval of the 2024 tax budget to finance, purchase of the vehicle for the Police Department to health and safety and finance, transfer[1728.92]